Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if we could all rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Slacta, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Me and Honored Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Here.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilman Slacta?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Here.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Here.
Oh. Counsel, just as a reminder, just to perfect the record, counsel pursuant to our administrative code, there's a requirement that counsel must make the determination that Councilman Gibson was not able to attend tonight due to extraordinary circumstances, which is not defined by law. Of course, we still need to maintain a court.
Sure.
I so move.
So move second. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Thank you. We're just chuckling whether Mike's supposed to vote on that or not.
Um, I don't think...
And what if he votes no?
You want to vote no, Mike?
There's nothing that comes to a special gain or loss, but there's not a conflict issue in regards to that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Okay. Could we move on to the overview of the public hearing, please? Green Sheet 16-09-0293.
Yes.
Anne?
Anne Wright, Finance Director. This meeting is a public hearing on the final millage and the final budget for the city of Anita Springs for fiscal year 2016-2017. The statutes and the city charter require that this public hearing be preceded by notice of the hearing. Such notice was published in the news press on September 19th, 2016. The proposed millage is .8173 mils per thousand of taxable value compared to the rolled-back rate of .7724 mils per thousand of taxable value. The proposed millage is a 5.81% increase from the rolled-back rate. The proposed millage of .8173 has been adopt-- has been the adopted millage of the city since fiscal year 2012-2013. This proposed millage is established to pay for the fiscal year 2016-2017 budgeted expenditures.
That sounds great. I couldn't have said it better myself. Very good, Anne.
And then we can move on to public comment?
Yes, okay, fantastic. If we'd like to move on to public comment at this time, please, members of the public that'd like to speak, please come forward. Rick, how are you?
Oh, pretty good. Good to see you, Mayor.
Good to see you.
Counsel, I'd like you all to make a liar out of me because you're not going to drop the rate, so make a liar out of me. I know you're not going to drop the late rate. I could put that in stone, you're not going to drop the rate, so make a liar out of me.
And do something for the people who live here, not the people out of town that haven't
moved in here with their hotels yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that'd like to speak? Okay, going, going. Seeing none? Okay, we'll move along to review of budget document. Changes approved by the City Council on September 7th, 2016. Green Sheet 16-09-0294.
Counsel, the only change that was in the draft that has now come before you for this hearing is to remove the $500,000 principal prepayment for May 1st, 2017, as directed at the September 7th hearing. And then the pages are attached that were changed by that as a result of reducing total expenditure budget by $500,000.
Okay. Counsel, anything on that? Yes, Amy?
Could you review that again? I, if, see if I have this straight, that if we remove it, then we're not, we will, we will reduce, remove our flexibility to possibly pay, prepay the, the May payment for that bondage? Is that true?
That is correct because of the requirements within the city charter as well as state statute. However, the communication that I did send to you addresses an option for you to put $500,000 in that debt service fund, but call it a contingency line item. And then in, we talked about the February timeframe, but there, I did research and we did not need to give quite so much notice. It's a three-day notice if there is a prepayment, so we have a little more time. But in the spring, to allow time to give notice, if that's a desire, it can be discussed by counsel and at which time, if it's determined that there's a desire to make that prepayment, then it would be a resolution to actually do a transfer from the contingency line item to the principal payment line item.
And if we decide we don't want to make the payment, that we don't have to?
That's correct.
And could we use that for something else?
Um, with, within that debt service fund, you now have a contingency budget, but a debt service fund by definition is, is for purposes of debt-related, paying debt-related items.
Even with a budget transfer, you can transfer it out of debt services and put it into a capital improvement or parks and racks.
It, it would create, and it would increase the total appropriation of that other fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
But it'd amend the budget.
But you could do a budget amendment.
Yeah, you could do a budget amendment to move it in and out of each different...
It, it doesn't, it doesn't allow you within law to actually increase the total. You can move amongst the line items, but not to increase the total budget of a, of a given fund.
That's one state statute?
Pete? So Greg, I, it's, I had a brief chat with Carl and Anne yesterday, and it appears that that's what staff has figured, that as among funds, you can't transfer.
Okay.
Now, when, now when the year is out, you could take it out of there, right? It's not locked in there for...
Through, through the budget process.
Through the budget process.
Yeah, at the end of the year, it can be either carry, undesigned to carry forward or carry for, or designated to carry forward, but we'd have to, it's still designated right now for debt services if we so desire. That's the only thing it can be used on. It cannot be transferred out for capital improvements, per se.
At, at this point, since it's in the debt service fund.
Until the year is up.
So, in essence, where we thought we had the flexibility to wait till the spring, we basically, whatever decision we make today is it for the year, that fiscal year, right?
To make that prepayment, but the next scheduled payment due date is November 1st.
Right.
So you, you would have an opportunity to accumulate that first year's worth of revenue and use that funding to make the November 1st payment.
But I think what, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counselman, is that once it's in there, it's in there. We can't use it for anything else.
That's what I got.
So when we make that, it's there, it's there. We can't transfer it anywhere else.
Right.
I think that's what Counselman Forbes was looking for, is the flexibility to move it amongst accounts.
So what, but, but what, what I think you also said to Greg was, if we wait till the end of this coming fiscal year and we don't use, if we put it in that contingency, we could, if we didn't spend it in the spring, we could, when we go into the next budget year, pull that 500 out, or is it there forever?
Those funds, and are you talking about the actual contingency account, the expenditure side?
You, you were saying, you were proposing, we could put that 500 into a debt service contingency account.
Correct.
And my question was, is assume that we went all the way through the fiscal year and we didn't spend that money, that's that 500 grand, the contingency. At the time we do the next budget, can we pull that money out then and move it, or we kind of, it's there?
The, the expenditure, the budget goes away at the end of the year, so that, that resets, but I believe you may be referring to the collection of the revenue?
No, I'm, I'm talking about this paying early 500 grand. Isn't that what you were talking about?
Right. Uh-huh. The budget goes away at the end of fiscal year, but you could have a new budget for the next year.
But can we...
But they could move the $500,000 anywhere they wanted at the end of the fiscal year, correct? In the, as part of the new budget?
Right.
As part of the new budget, they could budget.
Yes, for 1718.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I have trouble understanding if you can move it in, why you can't move it in the beginning, okay.
But it's a broader contingency.
Because it's a new budget at that time. We would be moving it to the 1718 budget instead of within the 1617 budget.
And, and you go through the, the process that requires public hearings. And that, there is a provision, if you, if, and I'll make that clear, is, is that the law allows you to do, to, to transfer it elsewhere, but you have to go through the same process that you go through with the initial adoption of the budget.
Which essentially is, in a nutshell?
Public hearing and advertising.
One public hearing, or...
The, the two public hearings.
Oh.
Oh, well, that's not a...
And, and, and the advertisement.
Well, then it would make sense to me, just speaking for me, to leave it out of that contingency, and then if we wanted prepay it and we decide, we just have to decide 31 or 32 days earlier than we thought.
Right.
I would rather do it the other way. I'd rather put it in and have a public hearing if we wanted to transfer it, because I don't know about the rest of you, but when we voted to get these additional funds from the special revenues, I thought of it as being an ability to prepay the debt. And, because again, I'm sort of halfway in the, in the camp of the mayor who said we shouldn't raise taxes, but if you had it for a...
Let's get you there 100%, Counsel.
No, no. Because Mr. Mayor...
I'll take you half, I guess.
Because you, you need both halves of that. You need a expenditure reduction and a, and a reduction in the taxes, and I don't think we've done it on the, we've done it already on the other side, so. So we did raise taxes, and at least my view was that it should be done, we should use it to prepay debt. So I would rather put it in a content, contingency, and if for some reason everything falls into place and we have to spend all that money to do the quadrant, then we should have a public hearing and take it out if we wanted to use it for that purpose, or we should prepay the debt, because then we'll know the timing of that big expenditure that's coming in. So I would do it just the opposite way. I'm sorry, Fred.
But I thought we couldn't, once we put it in, we couldn't get it out till the end of the year. Can we get it out by doing a public hearing?
By, by going through, through the same process as, as the budget was initially adopted.
Then it makes no difference, Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say, it makes no...
Right.
Now, though, when you say two public hearings, can those be the same two public meetings as our meetings, monthly meetings? We just have to advertise it?
You just have to advertise it.
Our first and third, it's fine, we don't have to have special meetings. Gotcha.
Because at that point, you're not trying to maneuver around everybody else's public hearings for their budgets, the other governments. You're not doing that.
I mean, it's similar to an ordinance. I mean, you do it.
Yeah, that's what I would, yeah. I just want to make sure.
Yes, and if I can just read what the state statute says, so, to make sure that I've explained it correctly.
Do you want to read it, Anne?
After this week, I didn't want to have any other special meetings.
Yeah.
It's been hard, too.
Exactly.
Hey, Jose, how you doing? You, you want to patch me in? Okay, buddy. Yeah, go ahead, Anne.
Okay. If a budget amendment is required for a purpose not specifically authorized in the three paragraphs above, or the two paragraphs above, and those two paragraphs allowed for moving amongst the same fund without changing the total appropriations, um, if a, the, the budget amendment must be adopted in the same manner as the original budget unless otherwise specified in the municipality's charter, and our charter does not otherwise specify that.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, Amy?
Well, I'd like just to make a motion that we have that contingency fund in the debt service, the contingency at, line in the debt service fund, so that we could proceed, if we want to, to prepay that debt.
Okay.
And then make that adjustment to the budget.
I'll second that. Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. Anne, if we do this, it's not an automatic, it would still become, it would still have to come before counsel in order for it, us to do the prepayment.
That, that's correct, because that would require counsel action to do a transfer out of the contingency account to the appropriate line item.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Further discussion, Counsel? Roll call, please.
Can you repeat the motion real quick, please? Councilwoman Karamba was breaking up a little bit when she made the motion. Could you just repeat it again?
Oh, repeat the motion. Do you want me to repeat it? Yeah, you repeat the motion.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Amy Karamba for the city to use the contingency in the debt service item so that the city can pay if they want to pay, and that will be brought back to council at a later date. And alternatively, if they decide to use the money this year for any other purpose, it can be done through a budget amendment.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Further discussion? Mike, you okay? Greg, did you have something?
I just had a quick question, because I think this all came out when Councilman O'Flynn brought it up. Is this the money that was collected through the two tax increases, through the communication tax and the FPNL tax?
Do we need to make that statement in the, in the motion that that's the funds that
will go there? Because if it's less or more, is it just...
Those would be the only funds available in that, in that fund, because it doesn't carry...
Well, I'm just saying, the, I think the contingency was for 500,000. What if it comes in at 480,000 or whatever?
I think the, but, that's the estimate, is that 500,000, but I believe, if you look at the budget, you'll see that there's line items, has specificity as to the source of the revenue, and in this case, the source of the revenue will be the additional portion from the communication services tax and Florida Power and Light franchise.
Mr. Mayor, if I might? Yes. The, the $500,000 is the, should the council decide to prepay debt? Okay? $500,000 is the minimum?
Gotcha.
On a prepayment. That's how we got to that number. Great. Thank you, Carl. Pete?
Yeah, just on, on Greg's point, so, my understanding is that all of the money that's coming out of these two taxes is being dedicated toward debt payment.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, so it's more than $500,000, it's, what is it?
999,000 for the...
It's 900, right, right. So, um, you know, from my perspective, the purpose was to reduce our cash flow constraints, which are substantial, the $3.5 million in debt service every year, and I think this increase, which has a sunset on it, is going to work perfectly to do that, as is. But I would say, because, you know, Amy has raised this several times, I'm going to vote for this as, I mean, as a courtesy to the flexibility she wants, but it's not something I would intend to vote for eventually, because I don't think it reduces the cash flow constraints, which was the original purpose. But I don't want to debate that now, we've talked about that many times before, so. But I'm going to vote yes, as, to accommodate her request.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Fred, anything?
I'm just going to vote yes.
Steve?
Good.
Greg?
Good.
Amy? Mike? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta?
What did he say?
He's good.
He's good.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Okay, great. Now I guess we're, um, let's have a discussion on the final budget. Who'd like to...
Are we reading the resolution?
Fred?
I'm not sure what, how this will set with my colleagues, but I...
That's what you're going to say.
I really want to, I want to, I want to make Rick a liar. I want to propose a one-cent budget cut on the adware. And it's, and I already know that I'm going to hear the language that it's, you know, it's a token thing, but it's being on the right side, and I'd rather be on the side of this. We already reduced, what was it, the impact fees for hotels, which was a lengthy discussion. So I, I think we should do this. That doesn't mean it'll pass, but that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Amy?
No.
Don't.
No, it's, I'm going to...
Can you repeat that motion again?
To reduce the mill by one, one penny.
By one penny?
By one penny.
My question is just, how much is that?
I, I'd be more supportive of two pennies.
Eighty-six thousand, I think.
Eighty-eight thousand. He said he wanted...
How much is it?
Eight.
It's 88,000 per penny.
And if I could clarify for our budget purposes, it, it will be an impact to our revenue of 86,598 because we don't budget the full amount.
Yeah.
The state requires us to budget at least 95% of the revenue, but sometimes taxes don't get paid, so to be conservative, we, we budget a little bit less.
Do we have a compensating expenditure reduction there?
No.
So what'll happen?
Come out of, it'll come out of the fund balance.
Fund balance?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I might? Listen, we're talking about two pennies. One penny's half of that, Amy. You said you were in half, right? I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
My half was for...
I think that was a different topic, Mayor. Oh, okay.
My half was for expenditure reduction.
Okay.
Does, does staff have any proposals for an expenditure reduction there?
No, we don't.
The budget is structured at this point where the general fund is actually adding to fund balance, so it's just a reduction of how much additional fund balance will be generated.
Okay. Yes, Carl, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, um, this may not be popular, but I just feel obligated, as your manager, to recommend denial of this, of this proposal. We have gone through a significant and enlightening budget process. Part of that process was trying to find efficiencies, and I think I've even stated publicly that we ought to be looking for efficiencies every day, not just during the budget process. And we're promised we're going to continue to do that. I am concerned, though, that to hear that we are continually squeezed with cash flow because of projects that we're trying to complete, but also, more importantly, what the counsel would like to accomplish in the near future, that a reduction of any kind just does not make fiscal sense to me, as, as your manager. Obviously, the counsel will do what you, what you will, and we will adjust the budget accordingly, so it is counsel's pleasure, obviously. I'm just recommending, as your manager, that you deny this request.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Counsel, there's been a motion and a second for a reduction by a penny. Further discussion? Greg?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up, I mean, it, to me, this is sending mixed messages. I mean, during the budget process, we sit up here and we voted to, to increase the tax on the communications and the FPNL, and now we're doing this. If we weren't looking to gain money, why did we add those taxes on there? Why didn't we just, you know, leave them where they were and lower the millage, or not go the full amount that we needed to go to? If we were looking to save the taxpayer some money, I mean, let's save it on, as we've been lambasting in the newspaper, hidden taxes and so on. I mean, if we're going to do this, let's do it upfront and, you know, do it the right way. We should have never raised those, those taxes, and now we're putting $500,000 in the contingency fund for debt services that I agree with Councilman O'Flynn about that may or may not give us a benefit with paying this down sooner. Still going to be, it's not lowering our payment down, down the road, it's still going to be $3.5 million for the next three years, four years, five years, whatever it is. So to me, uh, it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, especially when we know what's coming down the road. I know we want to be responsible to the people, and I know during the budget time, we talked about it. The one cent, it's 80, 86,000, 88,000, it's semantics, but to the normal person, we're talking probably a dollar, $2? I mean, you can't even buy a soda for $2, and it's a year. We're not talking $2 a month, we're talking $2 a year on this, and...
And the city loses 88,000.
And the city loses 88,000, and like, like, uh, Councilman Karamba said, we don't have a mechanism to lower an expenditure, so it's not, it's not like we're robbing Peter to pay, oh, we're just robbing the bank and not putting, taking anything away. And I don't propose that we do, because the, the city council, or not, the city staff has come to us with a, a bare-bones budget, what they need. There's, I don't think that there's a lot of fluff, or any fluff, in this budget, so I, I'm going to vote to deny it. I mean, I think one cent, and I understand where Councilman Forbes is coming for, being a token, and, and it is, it would be that, but it's, I think it hurts us more than it helps us. And that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Amy, anything further?
No.
No?
He said it very well.
Good.
No. I mean, what have we done for the past three months? It's been, try to raise money so that we can have flexibility, and I, I disagree about the debt payment, because in the long run, it's going to, it's going to matter. Not the payment itself, but the timing.
Right. I agree with that.
It'd really, really be helpful if we do get a project going, and I don't know what kind of debt parameters we have, but normally, if you prepay the, the principal, it does affect the interest that you pay over the debt, so in the long run, the total will be less, but maybe we have a different kind of bond there. I, I didn't look at the details. But irrespective of that, I, I really think it's important that we are consistent in the, in the process that we follow, and often, it's hard for me to follow what we're doing. Once, not often, every once in a while, I feel like, this is inconsistent, you know? So I think to be consistent, I will not, and I do think it's just a token, and, you know, we, we could take a look at this next budget season, when we have our hands around some of this stuff, and we could always reduce the rate in the future. But in the, in the meantime, let's, let's get our responsibilities taken care of in a proper way. So I'm going to vote no.
Steve?
I agree with Greg, and also, our city manager's been warning us for a while about, a little concerned about the cash flow and all that, so I'm going to vote to deny.
Okay. Peter? Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I think there are a lot of things, I think, to address Greg's well-put point. Things relate to each other, but they also stand by themselves. So I, I, you know, the notion of paying down that debt burden with that incremental amount of money, which brings us even with Astero, that has a sunset on it, makes sense to me. Fred made a point, which I was, been thinking about today. I actually mulled around in my mind, should I suggest a million-dollar tax decrease? Because yesterday, we agreed to 2 million on the hotels, and I thought, if I suggested that, that would pretty, be pretty snippy, so I'm not going to do that. But, so I, so, so that's in the back of my mind, which kind of leads me, maybe, to say yes, but that's not really a good reason. I mean, in other words, you either agree with that hotel impact fee decrease or you don't. I don't, obviously. So, it, it's, um, I, I think on balance, I'm gonna agree with, um, and, and I think in this case, city manager, uh, you know, we, we asked him to be the shepherd of this budget. Um, and I appreciate him stepping up and, um, giving an opinion on it. Um, and I think that matters to me. So on balance, I'm gonna vote no. Although, I am troubled by what we did yesterday, and this in the context of that, frankly. So.
Okay. Fred, anything further?
No, I just, I think it just sends a good signal to the, to the residents and I, and the, um, what we've done. Number one, those, those, uh, communication taxes and all that. That, everybody pays those, not just people that have real estate. So that's kind of a, that's another way of raising taxes in a different manner that spreads the load to others. And, uh, I just think that it would be a good thing to do. It doesn't mean that if you're on the other side of the argument that you're wrong and all that. It's, it's not worth having a, even a bad word over.
Well, last week, you were on the other side of it, so.
I know.
It proves that point. I got four cell phones.
Well, then you're gonna pay four times as much.
I know.
And I have Sprint service. Don't I wish I had Verizon yesterday, right?
No, you don't.
Okay, further discussion? Counsel? Yes, Mike? Uh, Mike, yes. Thank you, Steve. Mike, um, comments or thoughts here?
No, like I said, I'd be more supportive of two cents. I mean, why aren't we talking about 88,000 here? Uh, after raising, you know, a million dollars for the communicate, communication tax and the other tax. I mean, 80, 88,000, you know, to me is nothing. You know, I'd be more supportive of two cents, but I'll support the one cent.
Okay. Further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
No.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
Councilman Slacta?
No.
Okay. Mike, do you want to make another motion, or no?
Well, like I said, I'll make a motion for two cents.
All right, I'll second that. Counsel, discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Um, I want to ask a question, a process here.
It's not a reconsideration. I think...
Well, it, it's...
It's greater than...
It's greater than what was turned down. I mean, I mean, I'm, I intend to suggest 20 cents in a minute if we approve this. If we, if we're gonna, if we could disapprove this. I mean, what, what are we, what's, what are we doing here?
Well, I mean, again, counsel is free to call whatever motion that counsel wishes to call. We have, um, a resolution before you, written as is. You can make a motion to approve the resolution. And I can read it, and then we can process that. Or alternatively, if you want, because I don't consider it a reconsideration, I think you can have the motion go forward.
Why isn't it a reconsideration of the one that's just been voted down?
It's a different motion.
Substanceively, the one has just been voted down. The one is within the two. All right, if you want to vote on it, we'll vote on it.
I understand your point. Uh, I... Let's just vote on it.
Let's vote on it.
It's gonna go down, so.
All right.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Uh, no.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
No.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
Councilman Slacta?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay. Did you want any three? You, you were jumping in for three, weren't you?
No, I was jumping in to say, can we, I'm, I would like to make the motion to accept the budget as written.
Second.
Now, pursuant to Florida law that requires reading of the resolution into the record, there's two res, two resolutions. I'm gonna read the first resolution, which adopts the final levying of the ad valorem taxes. Um, City of Benita Springs, Florida, resolution number, and that resolution number will have an assigned number when we're done. A resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and providing an effective date. Whereas, the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, on September 22nd, 2016, adopted fiscal year 2016, 2017 final rate following a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.065. And whereas, the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.065. And whereas, the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, has been certified by the Lee County Property Appraiser to the City of Benita Springs Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, section one. The fiscal year 2016, 2017 final ad valorem operating millage rate for tax calendar year 2016 is hereby adopted at 8.8173 mills. This final operating millage rate is greater than the rolled back rate of .7724 mills by 5.81%. Section two, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, duly passed and enacted by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, at a public hearing this 22nd day of September 2016. If there's a motion? Or there was a motion?
There's already been a motion. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Counsel, further discussion? Mike? Roll call, please. I don't...
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
We'll read the second resolution into the record. It changed. This is the City of Benita Springs, Florida, resolution number 16 dash 50. So we do have an assigned number here. Resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017, providing for an effective date. Paragraph, whereas, the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.065. And whereas, the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the budget for fiscal year 2016, uh, through 2017, including expenditures as follows. General fund. Appropriated expenditures, 12 million, 538,656. Appropriated reserves, 9 million, 206,533 for a total general fund of 21 million, 745,189. The special revenue funds. Gas tax, uh, fund appropriated expenditures in the amount of 777,750. Gas tax fund appropriated reserves, 2 million, 470,354. Impact fee funds appropriated expenditures, no money assigned. Impact fee funds appropriated reserves, 5 million, 767,378. Grant fund appropriated expenditures, 80,000. Building fees fund appropriated expenditures, 2 million, 77,250 for a total special revenue funds of 11 million, 172,732. Debt service funds appropriated at 4 million, 136,186. Capital fu, project funds appropriated, 6 million, 835,236 for a total appropriated expenditures and reserves in the amount of 43 million, 889,343. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, section one. The fiscal year 2016, 2017 final budget is hereby adopted. Section two, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, duly passed and enacted by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, at a public hearing this 22nd day of September 2016.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
I'll make it.
There's been a motion and a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. All right, anything else? Audrey or Ann?
No, I, I should have said before, but the, the revised version added the 500,000 back, which...
Great, great, okay. Anything else? Arlene, Carl, Ann, Audrey?
Concludes your budgets.
We is done.
Okay, fantastic. Well, we got, we got, I'm sorry.
One quick second. A little off the topic, but I see a handsome guy in a white shirt back there, Mr. Carumba. And I understand it's, uh, James and Amelia's 26th wedding anniversary. So, uh, congratulations.
Where does the time go, Amy?
I don't know. It's been 26 wonderful years.
So you're gonna get your $100 steak tonight?
County steak, but we're going to Capitol Hill.
All right. Congratulations, Jim and Amy. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yes, yes. In fact, we are at public comment right now. Rick, you want to?
Ready to go.
It's not white. It's not white.
Oh, but I was way in the back. No, I simply want to thank all of you for concluding at appropriate time. We have a nice six o'clock or so. So I'm very appreciative of your, your punctuality.
Happy anniversary, Jim and Amy. Happy anniversary. Rick?
Okay. Uh, well, I told you the truth and you didn't make a liar out of me. So I'm, I still tell the truth. Thank you.
All right. Rick, we didn't want you to, you know, go to the other place for being a liar. We did it for your soul.
What was that?
I said, we didn't want you to go to the other place for being a liar. So that's why we kept you honest.
Right.
That's true, yeah, yeah.
We didn't want you to do that.
I knew, I knew that you guys weren't gonna do anything for the people of Benita Springs. All you're gonna do is give away to people that don't even live here yet. They're gonna build motels here and clog up our roads. And we're gonna build more roads. So we gave them a $2 million tax break yesterday. And today, we're gonna take, uh, $2 out of every individual's, take more money out of everybody's pocket, you know? Of course, you, you know, you're a fireman. You, you, you take all the money you can get, right? You know, it's more, it's more prop, it's more property value. It's more money for the fire department. Gee whiz. It's pretty, pretty hard to figure that. And you get to spend my money. Well, boy, I gotta get elected there.
Come on.
I'm gonna take, I thought he was a conservative, number three, but I guess he wasn't.
Oh, all right, all right. Uh, counsel, anything further? Anybody else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Motion to adjourn? So moved in a second. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it.